Could you please, please?
There's more.
Yeah, yep. If not, we can...
All right, I call to order the Code Enforcement Regular Board Meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Roll call. Christian?
Board Member Art Gallo, Board Member Maurice Capro.
Here.
Board Member Karen Owens.
Here.
Board Member Debbie Pankey.
Here.
Board Member, Vice Chair Miguel Martin.
Present.
And Chair Steve Gilde.
Here.
And Board Attorney Amelia Olmer.
Here.
Mr. Gallo did notify us previously that he wouldn't be able to make it. He did ask that he'd be excused, his absence be excused.
Sure. Yeah. No problem. All right, may I ask everyone to please stand and join in a moment of silence? Mr. Capro, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Chief, do we have any changes this evening to the agenda?
Good evening, everyone. We do not have any changes to the cases.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to respect those that are in attendance today to move Item 600 to the lead of the docket, followed by 500 and 501 for those that are present, and then the remainder to follow as written.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone who will be giving testimony this evening, I would ask that you stand to be sworn in.
So anybody who's going to, has a case and is going to, yeah, offer testimony at all, just raise your right hand. Do you, you can just ra- raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
And if you are giving testimony, if you could come to the lectern, ma'am, we will bring a hand mic to you. Okay. All right, and again, this is getting repetitious, but another great job for the monthly report for April. One hundred and eighty-three cases, I guess, were initiated, and there are seventy-six open, and only two, I guess, are coming before the board, so small percentage. Great job. Thank you. Has anyone on the board reviewed the April 22, 2025 minutes?
I did review them, and I moved that they be accepted with the one correction I mentioned to, to, to the clerk. That would be to add in that the moment of silence we had last month was in memory of Mr. Thompson, a longstanding board member of this board.
A second then.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, and then we are going to move to the first item, 600. Mr. Albon?
For the record, Chris Albon, Code Compliance Inspector with the City of Winter Springs. I have been sworn. I request this presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. The first agenda item to be heard, case number 2024 CE 001363, for the property located at 1112 Arbor Glen Circle, for the violation of IPMC Section 302.3 Sidewalks and Driveways. Case summary: On January 28, 2025, a public hearing was held before the City of Winter Springs Code Enforcement Board in which the respondents were found in violation of Section 302.3 Sidewalks and Driveways of the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, and issued an order requiring the respondents to correct the violation on or before February 15, 2025, or a fine of $150 per day would be imposed for the violation, beginning on February 16, 2025, and continuing until the violation is corrected. On February 18, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the violation remained for that violation of Section 302.3 Sidewalks and Driveways, and executed an affidavit of noncompliance. Exhibits 1 through 3 says Exhibit 1 of the reinspection on February 18, 2025, Exhibit 2 of the sidewalk driveway, and Exhibit 3. On February 25, 2025, a notice of compliance hearing was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On March 31, 2025, the notice of compliance hearing was returned to sender. On April 2, 2025, I posted the notice of compliance hearing at the reference property at City Hall and executed an affidavit of service. Exhibits 4 through 7 says Exhibit 4 of the reinspection, Exhibit 5 of the reinspection, Exhibit 6 of that notice being posted to the property, and Exhibit 7 of the notice being posted to the property. On May 5, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the violation remained. Exhibits 8 through 9, Exhibit 8, and Exhibit 9 of the reinspection. Prior to today's hearing, the last reinspection was conducted on May 22, 2025, in which the property is found to remain in violation. Staff recommendations, staff recommends the Code Enforcement Board find that the respondents had not complied with the order issued by the Code Enforcement Board on January 31, 2025, impose a fine of $150 per day for the violation of Section 302.3 Sidewalks and Driveways of the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, beginning on February 16, 2025, and continuing until the violation is corrected. That concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Inspector, did you have any communication with the respondent?
To my knowledge, no, not since the last hearing.
Thank you.
Do we have a respondent here?
Yeah. Should I say?
Please. You, you received the notices from our Code Enforcement?
Yes, sir.
What is the status with the repair and?
Okay, first of all, the first notice I received, I was hospitalized, and I was diagnosed with Alzheimer's. Was in the hospital for a while. Then I went to see him at his office, and, and the issue of the driveway, the cracked driveway, it was repaired, okay? What happened was, there was a mold going underneath the driveway on the corner, and, and they repaired the roof, they re-shingled the house, and the truck that came with the shingles tapped on the driver on that corner and cracked it. So reinforcement work installed, like, like, like poles inside, hammer into the, into the, into the soil, and you can see the crack. I mean, everything is level. You can see the crack, but you need to wait until the sand settle down before sealing it, and that's the only item that need to be done. The ceiling, they told me I need to wait 90 days, but that, that's the situation.
Did you notice any change from your initial review and, and as far as the documentation, the pictures? I could not see any change. Were you able to, to see that that was lifted at all?
The, the only thing that I could, that was noticeably different was that there may have been some fill, some earth put beneath it to raise it up, but still it wasn't repaired in a workmanlike manner to connect it with the rest of the driveway.
In your opinion, it remained a hazard?
Correct.
Okay.
You mentioned...
Can I talk, sir?
One second, please. Go ahead.
Mr. Cortez, you mentioned the 90-day window that was given to you, I'm assuming by a handyman. When did that repair take place?
It took place like 60 days ago, and, and they removed the sand, they, they sealed the, the mold cave, and they put some kind of plastic material down there, they put steel rolls, and then they put the concrete slab on top. And, and, and you can see the crack, but it was. The crack haven't been sealed. I have all the material to seal it, but we need to wait until it settle down because it could go down, and then they need to come and put some soil underneath to keep it level. But it's not, I, I, motherfucker, I, myself is a retired, I'm a retired civil engineer, so I check everything that they were doing, and they were doing it in a good manner. So we need to wait for the sealing.
Are you applying that, or are the same?
No, I'm not. I'm gonna apply the sealing on the crack.
I understand that. You're gonna do that, though?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that. I have all the material in my garage.
Do you have further questions? Any, any questions?
Mr. Castro. Yes, sir. You said that it's been about 60 days since you, since that sand was put into the hole?
Yes, it was fixed like 60 days ago, yes, sir.
About 60 days ago. So 60, this is, this is the end of May, so that would mean it would have been fixed the end of March.
It would 30 more than March, and I can seal it and look, make it look symptomatically good in 30 days, yes.
So that was the end of March that you had it repaired. We met on, on January 31 and gave you until February 16. What happened between January 31 and March when you did that? Why, why it take so long?
I was hospitalized. I have Alzheimer's, and I haven't been working for a while, and, and that's the issue. But I'm good again with medication, so until I lose my mind, I can take care of that.
Before the board continues, could I just have him confirm his name and address for the record? I don't think we got that at the beginning.
I apologize. Can you please confirm your name and address?
My name is Jose Castro. The address is 1112 Arbor Glen Circle, Winter Springs.
Thank you. Does anyone have any further questions for Mr. Castro? Is, is there a motion? I'll entertain a motion if someone has one.
Well, we're in a situation, Mr. Castro, with Mr. Castro, that it's taken some time to get him to respond. Understandably, he was, mentioned he was hospitalized. I mean, do we have assurances that in 30 days, this repair will be complete?
Yes, sir. The, the repair is complete. Statistically, it's gonna be sealed the crack and, and will look good, but it's already done, the, the work.
So that's gonna take us to June?
June.
July 1?
Just curious what the thoughts are of my fellow board members before we go forward with the motion.
My, my feeling is that it's taken a long time for this to happen, and despite what might have been the cause, I think that some kind of a fine is, is in order until such time as it's finally completed. That, that's my thinking.
I would agree. Maurice, do you recall by chance how we arrived at the 150 mark the last time? I believe it was because it was gone, non-presence of respondent, if I recall.
I think that's, I think that's probably correct.
Personally, I'll throw that out there. I feel that the, the size of the repair would not be equal to the fine that would be established if we go off of the paper.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I, I, I agree. And I'm, I'm not saying $150 a day. I think it needs to be somewhat less than that, but I think there still needs to be something to ensure compliance.
I agree.
I, I agree as well.
You have a, a amount in mind, Maurice?
Oh, we're talking about from, from February 16 on. It's February, March, April, May. You're talking at least three, three months, potentially four months. I, I would suggest somewhere in the neighborhood between $25 and $50 a day.
Given that he has another 30 days, that's gonna be accruing?
Correct.
Until that occurs, I would go with the, the lower figure.
I agree.
Fine. I, then, Mr. Chair, I, I move to find that the photographs, testimony from the inspector and the respondent show that their, that, that, show that the respondent continues to be in violation of IPMC Section 302.3 Sidewalks and Driveways, and that the penalty set forth in the board's previous order dated, whatever that date was, be reduced to $25 per day from February 16, 2025, until compliance is reached.
Do I have a second?
I don't have that money, I'm telling you. I leave out security.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion, a second. Christian?
Board Member Capro.
Aye.
Board Member Owens.
Aye.
Board Member Pankey.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
And Chair Gilde.
Aye.
Okay. Your, your, your situation needs to be rectified with, with, and we're giving you the time for that 30 days. However, your fee is gonna accrue at $25 a day from the February 16 date, and i- in the event that you don't pay it upfront, it'll, it'll go on as a lien on the property, so.
I don't understand, sir.
Counsel, can you assist with the?
Sure. So the original hearing that was in January gave a compliance date of February 16. If the violation, the driveway wasn't corrected by that date, a fine could potentially be imposed, and the board has determined tonight to impose a fine of $25 a day from February 16 until the driveway is repaired, and the Code Enforcement Officer can confirm that repair.
Okay, if, okay, until he go back there and check it out, okay?
Yes, sir.
If it's not done, then you will find me. I understand.
No, I, no, I, no.
That's not correct. You did not meet the, the deadline, so there is a fine, and it will continue to accrue until that time that it is repaired in full.
It doesn't matter that I was hospitalized.
But that fine, that fine was, was set to be $150 a day. We reduced it to $25 a day.
And that, how much is that?
$25 a day from each day since February 16.
I need to pay that?
Yes.
From February?
We, that, that total will be established when you're inspected and when you re, when you complete that repair in full.
Wow. I don't have that money for that to pay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it?
That's it.
I moved here in 1990. It was a beautiful city and, and best school system in the whole center of Florida. I, I never imagined that we want to get to this. It's incredible, forty crack driveway.
It's more than just a crack, sir?
That's okay.
Okay.
Mother money. Mr. Castro, had you reached out to the code inspector?
Said I?
Had you reached out to the code inspector?
I went to see him, yeah, to his office.
Well, when, when I asked him if, if there was communication, he said he had not had communication with you.
Yeah, he, he went to the parking to talk to me.
That was in December 2024.
That was in December, okay?
That was the day before I went to the hospital, yes.
We're not talking about December. I'm saying since, since January 31, you had no communication with him.
Do I need to have communication? I fix it.
You, you did, you did, I'm saying you did not.
I hired somebody to fix it.
Yeah, well, but you, had you spoken to him and told him that there was an issue, it might have turned out differently, but because you...
I didn't know how to do that.
Well, we always tell our, we always tell people, please stay in touch with the code inspector, because that's, that code inspector is there to help you, not to harm you. So I'm, I'm sorry you chose not to do that, but that might have...
I didn't chose not to do, I did it. Not though he's liking, but I did it. That's fine. I, I will pay.
Okay.
All right. We'll move to item 500.
For the record, Chris Albon, Code Compliance Inspector at the City of Winter Springs. I have been sworn. I request this presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. The next agenda item to be heard, case number 2025 CE 000238, for the property located at 206 Cottonwood Drive, for a violation of Florida Building Code Section 105.1, permits required. Under Florida Building Code Section 105.1, permits required. Any owner or owner's authorized agent who intends to construct, enlarge, alter, repair, move, demolish, or change the occupancy of a building or structure, or to erect, install, enlarge, alter, repair, remove, convert, or replace any impact-resistant coverings, electrical, gas, mechanical, or plumbing system, installation of which is regulated by this code, or to cause any such work to be performed, shall first make application of the building official and obtain required permit. Case summary: On February 5, 2025, I arrived at the complainant's property to conduct inspection based on a citizen's complaint regarding an accessory structure that had been constructed in the rear yard area without a permit. I observed an accessory structure in that rear yard area adjacent to a screened lanai that had been constructed sometime. The estimate was October 2023 to November 2024, according to the Seminole County Property Appraiser imagery, imagery records. A permit check conducted on February 5, 2025, revealed no permits for that accessory structure. Exhibits 1 through 4. This is Exhibit 1 of the property at 206 Cottonwood Drive. Exhibit 2 of the accessory structure. It's this one right here. It appears to have wood structural members, a metal roof, and there's some electrical and fans under there. Exhibit 3, this is the Seminole County Property Appraiser imagery from, it is October 27, 2023. We're looking at here, this is the screened-in lanai. And then on November 23, 2024, now there's an accessory structure. On February 5, 2025, courtesy notice was sent to the property owners by USPS regular first-class mail. On March 11, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the violation remained. A permit check conducted on March 11, 2025, revealed that permit number RESD 2025-2948 had been applied for on March 4, 2025, but had not been issued for the accessory structure. On March 11, 2025, notice of code violation was sent to the property owners by USPS by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On March 14th, 2025, the notice of code violation was delivered to the property owners. On April 15th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the property and found that the accessory structure remained. A permit check conducted on April 15th, 2025, revealed that the permit RESD 2025-2948 had been applied for on March 4th, 2025, but had not been issued for the accessory structure. Exhibit five. This is exhibit five of the April 15th reinspection. On April 21st, 2025, notice of hearing was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On April 23rd, 2025, the notice of hearing was delivered to the property owners. On May 5th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the violation remained. Again, a permit check conducted on May 5th, 2025, revealed that the permit RESD-2025-2948 had been applied for on March 4th, 2025, but had not been issued for the accessory structure. Exhibit six. And then the last inspection was conducted on May 22nd, 2025. Found that the violation remained. A permit check was conducted on May 22nd, 2025, and again, found that the permit had been applied for, but had not yet been issued. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the code enforcement board find the property in violation, issue an order requiring the violation be corrected and the property brought into compliance on or before June 26th, 2025, which is 30 days, and consider an imposition of a daily fine of up to $250 per day in the event the requirements of the order have not been met by the date set for compliance by the code enforcement board. That concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Have you received any feedback from the permitting office as far as the delay on the permit?
No, I have not.
Okay, there's no insight as to.
So, if it.
If items are waited for, or needed, I should say.
Gone through review, but it couldn't be issued. I'm not sure why. That's typically between the applicant at that point and the permitting department to resolve whatever issue there may be.
Okay. Any other questions?
That original permit that you said was applied for.
Correct.
What was that for? You said it was not for the accessory structure.
It's for the accessory structure, but whatever, whatever the issue is with reviewing and issuing it, they just can't, the permitting department can't issue that permit at this time.
Do you have any questions?
Have you had any direct communication with the respondent?
I've had some communication with the respondent, but nothing as far as resolving it and getting that permit issued.
Christian, I believe I asked the last time there was a permit question if it was capable or were capable of retrieving those documents to see if there are any pending comments or issues on the permit that we can discuss with the respondent? Is that something that we can do again?
I mean, I can't get it from here, but I can. Yes.
I mean, I'll venture to ask the rest of my board if that's something that they would be interested in seeing.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Do we have a respondent here? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Joseph Ariola. I live at 206 Cottonwood Drive, Winter Springs.
Do you have any information that would help us as to why your permit is being delayed?
Yes, so I gave a first application, got denied. They had different measurements and stuff that, like setbacks and stuff from the side property lines that they needed to be corrected. And a blueprint, I sent what I thought they needed about a week ago, and they just sent me back another list of requirements needed or different measurements. So, I'm currently just trying to work with them, figure out what I need to get the permit, and it's pretty much it, yeah.
How, how many items are there, and can you share what they are?
Off the top of my head, I don't know all of them. But he wants pictures of the deck and the backyard, making sure it's not connected to the property. He wanted to know the setbacks, I guess. I had someone do a blueprint of it. They didn't put the setbacks on there, so I have to put the setbacks again. And there's a few other things. He had wanted to know if the roof was all connected. And from the drawing, it was hard to tell how big the actual deck was. And then, like, the deck's here, I got some pavers over there. There was a little confusion. It looked like the entire square footage of the structure was a deck. So, I just have to iron out those things with the office.
With the permitting office?
Yes, sir.
I see a hand being raised behind, are you, were you sworn in?
She was not.
Okay, we're going to need for you to be sworn in before you can testify, so let us wait till Christian comes back, please. Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can our attorney swear?
Yeah, I could swear her in.
Okay. If you'd stand and be sworn in, you can approach them.
Sure. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? That's good, okay. And we'll need your name and address as well.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Isabella Barini, and I live at 206 Cottonwood Drive.
Okay.
I just knew two other things that they were looking for. They wanted to know what the color, the back color of the house was compared to what color the deck was. And then, based on the blueprint drawings, they said that it was 412 square feet of the deck, but the deck is 360. So, they said that if it was 412, that we just had to resubmit the application with the correct square footage on there.
Okay.
So, it was just a couple, like, housekeeping things.
I do have a follow-up question. Was the work self-performed, or do you have a hired contractor with license?
It was self-performed.
Are you a contractor?
I am not.
No, okay.
The next question I have was, you mentioned that you just submitted back a week ago, or you received questions from a week ago. How, about how long has that permit cycle taken you? The last time you submitted, when you got comments?
From the first permit to now, you're saying, how long it took me to submit again?
The last document you sent versus how long it took you to get comments back?
I would say about a week, four day, four to seven days, I would say.
Yeah. Just so I can share with the rest of my board members, my thought process is you're still in permit limbo. Our purpose here is to bring you into compliance, not to punish. So, my mindset would be whatever that cycle would take, plus what is the extent of the comments that are on that permit, and how long it would take him to correct those documents. You said you had someone working on your prints. Do they give you a timeline when they would have those revisions to you?
No. I mean, it can be whenever, honestly. I mean, I just talked to him yesterday, so he's working on them now. Probably have them in the next few days. Yeah.
I'll yield to the rest of the board.
So, how much time do you think you will need before these permits are actually issued?
Well, I, I'm not entirely sure. I would ask for a few months, just given I have a very time-consuming job. I fly every week to a different city. So, it's kind of hard for me to be home, working on this and do that. I take full responsibility for not doing it the correct way in the first place. But if I could have a little bit of extra time, that would really help me out. I want to get the permits and everything squared away, not trying to get by, you know, I just want to get everything done so I can enjoy the deck I built.
So, the inspector is saying that he's recommending that we give you until the middle of, until the end of June. If we were to give you to the end of July, would that be enough time for you?
Yes, sir.
May I ask another question?
Please.
Looking at the comments that you've received, are you anticipating any rework? Having to take anything down and fix it?
I don't think so. I was pretty, you know, my dad helped me with it. He's built some decks in the past, so he was very, you know, on point with certain things. So, I don't think so. I don't anticipate it, but I'm not from Florida either, so I don't exactly know how certain things may work here.
Do you meet the setbacks?
I'm sorry?
Do you meet the setbacks?
Yes, yes, I do.
So, the setbacks are not an issue?
No, those, those should not be an issue.
Christian, were you able to find any information pertaining to the permit?
I don't know what has been said since I left. All I found was that it's obviously still in review and that the last comment I saw was from May 22nd.
Okay.
Asking for basically, I don't know if it was plans or something, to be resubmitted.
That kind of lines up with the testimony provided.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Any, I'll entertain a motion.
Maurice, you want me to go for it?
Go for it.
I move to find that the inspector's testimony and evidence be found that the property is, sorry, let me get my spot. The respondent is in violation of FBC Section 105.1, permits required for the accessory structure, and also move that the defendant or the respondent be given until July 31st, 2025, to remedy. If remedy is not provided, that a fine of up to $200 a day be assessed.
You say, you said up to $200 a day. I think we have to make it a fixed amount.
Thank you, sir, $200 a day. I'm willing to discuss if the board wants.
Any discussion, or do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. If there's no discussion, Christian?
Board Member Capra.
Aye.
Board Member Owens.
Aye.
Board Member Penkey.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
And Chair Gilday.
Aye. Do you understand the, you'll have till July 31st, 2025, as long as you're in compliance at that point and our code enforcement officer is able to confirm that?
Yes, sir.
There'll be no fine if it extends past that then.
So, if, just for clarification, if for some reason I don't get a permit or whatever by July 31st, every day after that, that the structure hasn't gotten a permit will be $200 a day?
Correct.
Okay.
I would strongly urge that you stay in touch with the code inspector.
Yes, sir.
And if you, if you run into a delay or whatever, because the code inspector can help you out in ways that I can't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Of course, thanks for having me.
Okay. We're going to skip one second here.
All right. About that, this mine heart is, mine heart is present.
We still have, I'm sorry, we're going to move to item 501, 502s. Thank you.
For the record, Chris Albon, Code Compliance Inspector at the City of Winter Springs. I have been sworn. I request this presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. The next agenda item to be heard, case number 2025 CE 000240 for the property located at 140 West Trade Winds Road for violation of IPMC Section 304.7, roofs and drainage. Under IPMC Section 304.7, roofs and drainage, the roof and flashing shall be sound tight and not have defects that admit rain. Roof drainage shall be adequate to prevent dampness or deterioration in the walls or interior portion of the structure. Roof drains, gutters, and downspouts shall be maintained in good repair and free from obstructions. Roof water shall not be discharged in a manner that creates a public nuisance. Okay, summary, on February 4th, 2025, arrived at the complainant's property to conduct inspection based on a citizen's complaint regarding the condition of the roof at the reference property. I observed that the roof failed to be maintained sound tight and without defects that admit rain and was in such a state of disrepair that the structure is deemed unsafe and unfit for human occupancy. I consulted with the building official on this as well before posting that unsafe unfit. The building official agreed with the unsafe unfit. I posted the notice for an unsafe structure at the reference property, exhibits one through five. This is exhibit one of the reference property. There's the tarps on the roof with the holes through them. Exhibit two. This is over the garage area. Exhibit three. Exhibit four of the posting. And exhibit five of the posting. On February 5th, 2025, a notice of code violation was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On February 14th, 2025, the notice of code violation was delivered to the property owners. On March 11th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the property remained in violation, exhibits six through eight. This is exhibit six of the reinspection. Exhibit seven. And exhibit eight. On March 11th, 2025, a notice of hearing was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On March 17th, 2025, the notice of hearing was delivered to the property owners. On May 5th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the property remained in violation, exhibits nine through 11. Exhibit nine of the reinspection. Exhibit 10. And exhibit 11. And then, on May 22nd, 2025, I conducted a reinspection prior to today's hearing. This is the exhibit for, exhibit 12 of the reinspection. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the code enforcement board find the property in violation, issue an order requiring the violation be corrected and the property brought into compliance on or before August 25th, 2025, giving 90 days and consider an imposition of a daily fine of up to $250 per day in the event the requirements of the order have not been met by the date set for compliance by the code enforcement board. That concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Have you had any conversation with the respondent or any communication?
Yes, but we still have not seen a permit application or any remedy for the roof repair.
Any conversation about intentions to remedy?
There, there's been some conversation as far as roofers going out there. Did receive a phone call from a roofing company inquiring about the unsafe unfit. And based on the conversation with them, they found that it was structurally unsafe to even do the repair.
Okay.
Yes, inspector, is the property still occupied?
To best of my knowledge, yes.
So, despite the fact that it's been posted as unsafe and uninhabitable, there are human beings still living in that property, correct?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. The unsafe unfit, it's more of a warning to occupants or anyone that may go to the property. We're not necessarily evicting people off the premise.
So I might understand that if a building inspector determines that a building is unsafe and unfit for human occupancy, that we still allow people to live in that building?
It's essentially, yes, it's to let them be aware that it is unsafe to occupy, that they probably shouldn't be there. But again, we're not removing people and, from their properties.
Do you have any questions?
Not for the officer or inspector.
Inspector, do you believe, do you believe that the condition of this property right now is a serious threat to the, to health, safety, and welfare of the public or people?
Not of the, the public. The property is fenced in. Really, you can only see it from the adjacent property. It's gated off. This is from the adjacent property, all my inspection photos. Otherwise, that's from the public right of way. So it is fenced and gated. I would say it's more of a hazard to any occupants of the dwelling.
Is there any liability to the city if people are living in there and something happens as a result of, of their living in that unsafe condition?
I believe that would be a question for counsel.
That is something I might have to look into more, more deeply, not off the top of my head, at least as a result of this code enforcement board's actions tonight. If, if a building is hazardous and someone is living in it, that is something that they would need to, to take care of on their own, or if there's a landlord or something involved, they might need to, to step in if it's not an owner-occupied residence.
This was not condemning, like condemning the property, this was just noting that it was unsafe?
Correct.
You think that is the distinction?
Condemnation, perfectly.
A couple of questions did pop to my head, if I can be entertained. The pictures all seem to be from the same location you mentioned, from the adjacent property. Just from your observations, does the damage extend beyond what is shown in the photographs, meaning other roof planes that may be out of view?
That would be speculation on my part. The best I can see is what was provided.
Then I'll reserve that for the.
What was provided.
Thank you, sir.
We have a respondent? We have a microphone, she can stay, coming over.
Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. For the record, would you please state your name and address?
My name is, my name is Cheryl A. Minehart, 140 West Trade Winds Road, Winter Springs, 32708.
Did you say your last name?
Minehart.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah. It goes with Cheryl.
Can you share with the board what your intention is as far as repair and what, what the status is of, apparently a roofing company has called in, is further action scheduled to take place to repair this property?
Well, can I show you a couple things, though?
Can you?
Can I show you a couple things? I want to talk to you, but I want to show you a contract that I signed with a roofing company.
Can, we're gonna have to have that submitted, if you have that. Pardon me? We can get it back.
Yeah, we can give it back. We might need to make a copy of it, but you can have the original.
This is the contract? Okay. Is there any other documents you want to provide? I'll make copies all at once.
I don't know what you're gonna be asking, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
What were you asking me, sir?
I was asking if you had any intentions or what the status was of, of repairing the property, but you mentioned you have this contract that we.
Correct, which has been very, very difficult to get somebody.
Okay.
I've, I've had three people out, I've called three other people, and they don't even show up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the first one, when I called up, they said, they, they agreed to it. I signed this whole thing right there on, right near my front yard. I signed everything. And then they turned around and said I needed to get an engineer to check the trusses.
Okay.
So that's fine. They said, well, this is the guy we deal with. And so I called him, and he didn't want to come out to my house unless I gave him my credit card for $700 before he'd even considered coming to my house. And then they made comments, he made comments like, it'll probably cost around $70,000. So I went with another one, and they came in, took pictures, and did all this other stuff. It's really difficult to get people to do anything, to make commitments. So then I found this other company. And in fact, the supervisor was supposed to show up today, but he was late. I said, well, I can't wait for a round form, because I have to be here at the city hall here. So they're coming tomorrow. But I signed the contract, and I've already paid seven, over $7,000 to them.
With the permits?
What?
With the permits?
I don't know what, they, they, they told me, when they tell you how much it's gonna cost, it's all confusing to me. They say, well, you're gonna have to pay one half of it upfront. So that's what I did. And I've got my bank statement here I brought with me to show you that I wrote a check and give you the check number.
Let's wait till we see the.
Pardon?
Let's wait till the contract comes back and is submitted, and we'll see if, if the information on there is sufficient. Give him a minute.
Oh, okay. Okay. I don't hear real good, I don't hear real good, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this contract is for the laminate, is that what they call it? And the, the underlayment?
Underlayment.
It's for the underlayment and the, and the, not the tiles, but what do you call? But this particular company, they have their own engineers. I don't have to go find one out on the street. Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On here, I do not see, in my quick examination, that they are going to pull the permit for you. Have you agreed to them pulling the roofing permit?
I thought that's why I was giving some of the money upfront, that was for them to be pulling the permit.
Okay. Okay, I missed that. I apologize.
Yes, sir.
And then, were the damages caused in such a way that you have a pending insurance claim that we need to be aware of for that timeline?
Insurance isn't gonna pay for it.
And.
It's been there since, I moved there in 82, and in 86 it burned down.
Okay.
And they rebuilt it in 87. And so it's been the same roof on ever since. But when I started getting some problems with it, I had, I had guys come out and put tarps on. I spent a fortune in tarps. But the, the reason that I didn't have any more tarps put on, why it looks like, it looks like that, is for the simple reason that I didn't want to go, I didn't want any of these guys to go up there and get on the roof, because I was afraid they might get As a way of trying to find money for getting this roof, which I did, I was able to get some money.
And my last question, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
The extent of the damage, is it localized to what was shown in the photographs by the inspector, or is there damage on the other parts of the roof as well?
No, the one, one section, the, the west side of the house. My, my house sits, goes from east to west, and then the garage is on the west side of the house. Damage is done on the north and the west side of the house. I don't have problems on the south and the east side of the house. And I stay where I know I can stay where it's safe.
Is this.
I'm on social security. I can't afford to go out and get an apartment.
Is this contractor replace the roof and hole, or just the portions that are failed?
No, he's gonna put a whole new roof on.
Whole new roof.
Because of the, because of the, because of the age of the, of the house.
Okay.
But not, not, but they're, they're gonna go up there, and the engineer is gonna go up there, and they, they're going to test, check the trusses. And I will have to pay for, I will have to pay for the trusses that are damaged and that need to be replaced, yes.
Okay.
And they also told me, I mean, I have, I had a certain amount of money. I don't even know, I should even be saying the amount to, to you, but anything over that, they do, they do financing. So I, I don't have any problem with the money getting it paid for. But I, this is the only company, like out of six, that have gone this far with me.
Have they given you an indication of one, they intend to, to do this project and complete it? A date of completion? Did they give you a date of completion?
No, no, no. I don't, not, no, not that I know of.
Did they let you know when they plan to start?
Did what, sir?
Did they let you know when they plan to start the project?
Well, they're getting it as fast as they can. The ones, one guy was supposed to have been out today, like I told you earlier. He came out late, and, and I, and I had to get to the meeting.
Okay.
See, I have a, my, my, my whole property is all since six-foot fenced, except for the front part, it's four, because Winter Springs wouldn't allow me to put a six-foot up front.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So.
I'm just reading the terms. It does state that they have 30 days to start work.
Now, I'm, I'm able to call anybody at any time, whenever I know any mention, but I don't know who to call.
Yeah, I agree.
Who?
We were communicating, he had a question. Do you have any other questions?
No, I think I'm satisfied with these.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. You did say this was a signed contract, because the copy we have isn't signed, but you have signed the contract with the company?
Yeah, it's on the second sheet.
Not the one that we have?
The one that we have is blank, so that's why I was checking.
It's not signed.
I signed my name to it. Now, this doesn't have it. This, on the main copy. You didn't give me the right one back.
I gave you the one that you gave me.
Oh? One of you has my name on the second sheet.
These, these are all copies. He returned what you had.
I'll state, just having gone through a re-roof myself, 90 days is not gonna cut it.
That's the extent of work, too.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it'll depend on whether they need to replace.
Trust.
Trusses and wood. And this contract only addresses one layer, removing one layer. If there's a second layer.
Off.
Yeah. We have a copy of the original here that does have Ms. Minehart's signature on it, and the contractor's signature as well.
The contractor's signature is on there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
May I say one thing?
Please, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This would never have happened, well, it might have happened, but the way my house is situated, you can't see from the street, either, either way. And the people that moved next door to me, they've been building their, this house now, it'd be, if they continue and finish it in December, it'll be two years they've been building at that house right next door to me. They cut down 60 to 70 trees.
Wow.
Live. And now you can drive down the road and see right into my house from, from the street. And so the people got upset because I made a comment, I called it Arbor. I didn't call anybody, I didn't call any of you. I called the Arbor, and I said, I didn't call to complain, but I just wanted to know how much money, how many permits do you need to have for 60 to 70 trees?
Mm-hmm.
And the woman, I was talking to her secretary, and she said, well, we'll call you back. And I said, okay. Well, within an hour, that Arbor was out there, and he, he shut the whole place down.
Mm-hmm.
And then, but they didn't cut down that many then, then they turned around and to finish the rest of it, they came out on the Fourth of July weekend and cut it down when nobody was hanging around and could hear it.
Mm-hmm.
And so they called and reported my roof. So this is what I've been putting up with.
Okay. That is not something that we can respond to.
I know you can't, but I had to get it off my chest.
That's fine.
You know, I just wanted to say something, you know.
Understood. Do you, I'm fine with the motion, and I agree with what you said as, as far as the time, and we can, we can have a discussion on this one.
I think we should have a discussion as far as time, because I, I don't think the 90 days will cut it, was my comment.
What are you thinking?
Honestly, we, we will not know, neither will she, until she gets someone to look at that roof.
In the past, when we've had roof issues, we've traditionally given approximately six months. But that, that was in dealing with insurance companies and the like. In six months, they should be able to get, I mean, they, they should be able to complete this contract in six months. I, I, there was no reason why they couldn't.
So.
And you're dealing, you're dealing with asphalt shingles. We're not dealing, we're not dealing with tile.
I'm not worried about the shingles. The shingle roof could go up in a matter of hours, frankly, right now.
Sure, it's a matter of trust.
It's the trust and the extent of damage, and they won't, honestly.
You don't know until you take it off.
You don't know until you start ripping it off.
You don't know until you open it up, right, of course.
And I don't want to place any undue burden.
Right.
But we do want it remedied for obvious reasons.
That's what I said. I mean, our history has been approximately six months. If we were to give you six months, would, would that be enough? I mean.
I think it would be with, with the fact that we're not dealing with an insurance company, and they already have the green light.
Right.
And they're ready to go. I'd, I'd be comfortable with that. I don't, what, do you think longer, or do you, are you?
If I was the one contracting on this, I would not set a time. Go ahead.
Can I say something else?
Please do.
I'm gonna have plywood put up, too. I don't know what you'd call it.
You're having what?
Plywood.
Okay.
Plywood sheeting.
Yep. Decking.
Inspector, I had a question.
So with the, in the event a permit gets issued, that would essentially give a pause to whatever timeline, because now the permit's in effect, so as long as that's in effect, until it's completed, passes final inspection, then we'd be looking at whatever timeline is there for the permit. So in the event, let's say the permit gets issued, passes final inspection, that matters resolved, the only time we may go back would be if the permit expires, there hasn't been a final inspection, and the roof is still in disrepair.
I guess I would be looking for guidance on how to make a motion to that effect, that we're placing a motion to come into compliance by pulling permit and have actual material work being performed on property, and that fines would not occur if a. and that fines would not occur if a final inspection is passed.
It may just be a matter of not bringing the case back. Staff not bringing the case back, as long as there's an active permit.
What we would do is we would pass a motion, just for argument's sake, six months. And as long as she's got, as long as they're in the process with permitting, the code inspector does not have to bring the case back to us as a non-compliance case. He can sit on it on full second time as he deems that they're in non-compliance and.
There's no.
Because we're not running after, we're not running after the inspector to bring non-compliance cases.
Understood, but I also know that we're putting a board name on a document that gives a firm deadline. That's the part that I'm having a heartburn on, because she won't know, nor will the contractor know until they open this up, how long that work is going to take them. And we're putting a firm deadline on this. But I guess if there's something in place.
But the permit supersedes that.
Okay.
What I'm hearing from you, correct?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, you could also, I mean, you could continue the case and not rule at all tonight if you weren't comfortable with that. Or you could set the six-month deadline, right? And then the permit would kind of toll any of the code enforcement deadlines. And then if everything is repaired, you might never see it again.
Continue.
I know how to word it.
Okay.
I know how to word it.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks.
Okay. I move to find that based on the testimony of the respondent and the inspector, the photographs show that there are in fact issues with the roof at 140 West Tradeswin Road in violation of IPMC Section 304.7, roofs and drainage. And that the respondent is in violation of the code. I move that respondent be given until, let's see, this is May, June, July, August, September, October, until November 30th, 2026, to correct the violation. In the event that respondent fails to comply by that date or have a permit issued and completed by that date, a fine in the amount of.
I do think we should probably just stick with correcting the violation by that date. I don't know that we can necessarily provide what specific remedy she needs to take by getting a permit.
Well, we're saying, I think, I agree with what you're saying. All right, then, okay, fail, comply by that date, a fine in the amount of.
I don't think we need to go to this.
$100 a day shall be imposed for each day that the property remains in violation.
I have one clarification request. You even mentioned November 30th, 2026, that's 18 months, 25. Okay. November 30th, 2025. I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? No. Christian, roll call. Sorry, Christian.
Board member Capra.
Aye.
Board member Owens.
Aye.
Board member Penkey.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
Chair Gilday.
Aye.
Okay. What we did was extended the period of time, so you should have more than sufficient time to have the whole roof corrected. But we will take into consideration, when you get the permit, there's. Yeah, we expect that it won't be. That's why we're trying to push it out. Okay. Understood.
I will suggest you get Inspector Elbon's number and be in contact with them. If anything was to come up as an issue, please be in communication.
Just please be in communication with our code enforcement officers?
Yes, sir. Correct.
On hand, no.
Go ahead, ma'am. Keep one up.
Yeah, essentially, essentially, we're saying that she has to come into compliance by November 30th. Okay? What does it mean to come into compliance? It means that the job is done completely. However, and here's what we're saying. We're saying that if, for whatever the reason, the job is not fully completed, but she has a permit and they're working on it.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, appreciate it. I saw, I believe, some folks walking in the back. Can you state your name, please?
Good, looks good.
So that's 502, 503.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you. This was 501.
That was 501, we're on 502.
Makes 502.
502, then 503, then 504.
We'll just run down the agendas.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, ma'am.
God bless. Okay, we'll move on then to item 502.
Can I ask a quick question before we move on?
Please.
Just for my own information, is there a reason why we're hearing cases 502, 3, and 4 separate? Since it's the same respondent?
Just for a matter of practicality, in the event one can get corrected before another, just so we're not, just to kind of keep it a little bit cleaner.
Just want to make sure there wasn't something else going on. Thank you, sir.
So for the record, Chris Elbon, Code Compliance Inspector with the City of Winter Springs. I have been sworn. I request this presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. Next agenda item to be heard, case number 2025 CE 000297 for the property located at 700 Cotton Tail Court for violation of IPMC Section 308.1, accumulation of rubbish or garbage. Under IPMC Section 308.1, accumulation of rubbish or garbage, exterior property and premises and the interior of every structure shall be free from any accumulation of rubbish or garbage. Case summary, on January 27th, 2025, I arrived at the complainant's property to conduct inspection of the reference property based on a citizen's complaint regarding the condition of the neighboring property. I observed an accumulation of rubbish and debris on the property, Exhibits 1 through 3. This is Exhibit 1 of 700 Cotton Tail Court. Exhibit 2 of the side yard area, side rear yard area with the accumulation of rubbish and debris. And Exhibit 3, just a closer up. On February 19th, 2025, a notice of code violation was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with a return receipt requested. On February 26th, 2025, a notice of code violation was delivered to the property owners. On March 25th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property, but was able to determine if the violation had been corrected. I spoke with the property owner occupant by phone and was advised that they request another two weeks to bring the property into compliance. On March 25th, 2025, a notice of hearing was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with a return receipt requested. On April 4th, 2025, a notice of hearing was delivered to the property owners. On May 6th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the violation remained, Exhibits 4 through 6. Exhibit 4 of the reference property. Exhibit 5. And Exhibit 6 of the side rear yard area. On, let's see here, May 22nd, 2025, reinspection was performed on the property. This is Exhibit 7. Exhibit 8. And Exhibit 9, found that the property remained in violation. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the code enforcement board find the property in violation, issue an order requiring the violation be corrected and the property brought into compliance on or before June 11th, 2025, which is 15 days, and consider the imposition of a daily fine of up to $250 per day in the event the requirements of the order have not been met by the date set for compliance by the code enforcement board. That concludes my presentation, does the board have any questions?
Do you have any questions? Any questions? No. And there are, the respondents, I don't believe you are here to be sworn in. If you're going to be providing testimony, can you please stand and be sworn in?
If you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Jeffrey Allen Williams, 700 Cotton Tail Court, Winter Springs, Florida, 32708.
Thank you. The remaining items, one, do you expect to have those cleaned up?
We've, so you saw in the pictures there, there was a dump trailer and a flatbed trailer. The last 72 hours, we've hauled out three loads of trash. I tried very hard to be done by today, 5 o'clock. And I apologize for my luck, trying to come in the way we did, all sweaty. We're close, we probably have another one, maybe two loads to get everything all cleaned up and looking good. So I don't see any problem with making it by June 11th.
Okay.
On that particular case number, which is just the yard debris and getting everything looking good again.
We'll take each one individually, so that we're just speaking of this one.
If, if. Yeah, June 11th should be fine.
That'll be fine, okay. Any further questions from the board? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to find that the photographs and testimony from both the officer and respondent show that there is an actual violation of IPMC 308.1, accumulation of rubbish and garbage. Further move that the respondent be given until June 11th, 2025, or 15 days from today's date, to correct the violation. In the event the respondent fails to comply by this date, a fine of $100 a day until that compliance is made.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All right.
May I, just for clarification, do I reach out to Mr. Chris and let him know that it is done and then he would come and inspect?
Yeah, we'll get to that in one second, please. Christian, roll call, please.
Board member Capra.
Aye.
Board member Owens.
Aye.
Board member Penkey.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
Chair Gilday.
Aye. Yes. Please stay in touch with Mr. Elbon and he will take care of you on that.
No worries.
All right. All right, let's move on to 503.
For the record, Chris Elbon, Code Compliance Inspector with the City of Winter Springs. I have been sworn. I request this presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. The next agenda item to be heard, case number 2025 CE 000298 for the property located at 700 Cotton Tail Court for violation of IPMC Section 303.2, enclosures. Or IPMC Section 303.2, enclosures, private swimming pools, hot tubs and spas containing water more than 24 inches, 610 millimeters in depth, shall be completely surrounded by a fence or barrier not less than 48 inches, 1,219 millimeters in height above the finished grade level measured on the side of the barrier away from the pool. Gates and doors in such barriers shall be self-closing and self-latching, where the self-latching device is less than 54 inches, 1,372 millimeters above the bottom of the gate. Release mechanism shall be located on the pool side of the gate. Self-closing and self-latching gates shall be maintained such that the gate will positively close and latch when released from an open position of 6 inches, 152 millimeters from the gate post. An existing pool enclosure shall not be removed, replaced, or changed in a manner that reduces its effectiveness as a safety barrier. Case summary, on January 7th, 2025, I arrived at the complainant's property to conduct inspection of the reference property. Based on a citizen's complaint, I observed the pool enclosure, which failed to be maintained such to adequately secure the pool, Exhibits 1 through 3. Exhibit 1 of 700 Cotton Tail Court. Exhibit 2, that is a screen enclosure with no screen. And Exhibit 3, closer up. On February 19th, 2025, a notice of code violation was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with a return receipt requested. On February 26th, 2025, a notice of code violation was delivered to the property owners. On March 25th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the violation remained, Exhibits 4 through 5. Exhibit 4, the reinspection. And Exhibit 5, so when we talk about that screen enclosure, that pool enclosure having no screen, we're also talking about for enclosures, the pool, there's no barrier in the side yard here. On March 25th, 2025, a notice of hearing was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with a return receipt requested. On April 4th, 2025, a notice of hearing was delivered to the property owners. On May 6th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the property remained in violation, Exhibits 7 through 9. This is Exhibit 7 of the reinspection. Exhibit 8, we still have the pool accessible from the side yard area. And Exhibit 9 of the reinspection. On May 22nd, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property, found that it remained in violation. Exhibit 10, Exhibit 11, and Exhibit 12. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the code enforcement board find the property in violation, issue an order requiring the violation be corrected and the property brought into compliance on or before June 11th, 2025, 15 days, and consider the imposition of a daily fine of up to $250 per day in the event the requirements of the order have not been met by the date set for compliance by the code enforcement board. That concludes my presentation, does the board have any questions?
Go ahead.
Your observations on reinspection, Inspector, show pictures of the fence. Did you have observation of the enclosure of the state that showed that the screen was off the enclosure?
So at that time, I haven't been able to see from any vantage point that screen enclosure except for, let's see, that first inspection date.
That, yeah.
Which would be January 27th. But still with the side yard being open, then it wouldn't comply with a safety enclosure for a pool in order to comply. In order to comply with that, if you're constructing a fence, it also has to be inspected for pool enclosure.
So, just for clarification, if the screening was complete, that would be sufficient?
As long as it met all the criteria? Correct. The property owner in this case, there, has a few options. If they wanted to replace all the screens for the pool enclosure, they could, and that would bring it into compliance as a safety enclosure and with the following case. But if they decided, I'm not going to re-screen, they could remove the enclosure, but the fence has to be, meet that requirement for a pool enclosure as well. So there's kind of two directions that they can go.
Okay.
Or they could have a baby gate. Baby gate covering the entrance to the pool and, yeah, that would.
It would still need to be permitted and inspected.
Yeah, my, my question was more for clarification of the observation of non-compliance was the fact, was based that there's no fence. It's not that you were able to visually observe the screen enclosure complete or being permitted.
It's more, I mean, the side yard's still accessible, so it still wouldn't meet code for a safety enclosure.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Can you, in your words, let us know what's, what's happening to bring this into compliance?
Sure.
And then we'll go from there.
So, as a safety precaution, to make sure that.
Let me stop you for a second. We're on to a new case. I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Jeffrey, Jeffrey Allen Williams, seven hundred Cotton Tail Court, Winter Springs, Florida, three two seven oh eight.
I apologize, thank you. All right, continue.
So, in the interest of safety, while we are moving forward with getting things done, I don't know how I do this, but we put up a four-foot orange temporary fencing around the screen enclosure. And that was taken today as a temporary fail-safe to help prevent any animals or people that wander into the yard from going directly into the pool since there's no screen there, since there's no screen up right now. You also saw in the pictures that Mr. Albon provided, not that one, but the other one, that there was a bunch of wooden pickets in one of the trailers. And that's the pickets that are going to be to finish the fence right here for the front to enclose the backyard. And we have a permit for that. And are getting, they're supposed to get going on that during the first week of June to, to keep it going for me. So there will be that, however, we don't have in our budget the money to replace the screens yet. That won't happen until July. But we will have it safely done with the fence protecting the area for security as well as the safety fence up around the pool enclosure until the screens are up. We could, we could certainly see the value in doing that for safety.
It's more than value. I, that's, that's a big safety concern with the pool and children.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just so we, I understand correctly, the fence itself in its entirety will be completed. They're going to start the first week of June or come back. Who's doing the fence?
I, I am, but I've had to hire people to help me.
Okay.
Because I, my back is messed up, so I wasn't able to finish the project.
Okay, they're scheduled to come back the first week of June?
Correct.
And did they give you a timeframe for work through completion?
What is, what is the, what's the recommendation on this particular one to have it?
June eleventh, which is fifteen days from now? If they're in the first week?
Theoretically, we'd be okay. If, if at all possible, if I could get to the end of June, I, I would feel very good. But if, if the board doesn't feel comfortable in granting that additional two weeks, then we'll do everything we can to make it happen by that date.
All right, I'd rather lean that way because it will be up to the board. But this is probably one of the most serious safety issues we do deal with and.
That's fine, we can go with that date. We'll make it happen.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. This was first noticed in January. Why is it taken now until May for you to put up any kind of safety barrier, as temporary as it is, around that pool?
I could, I could give you a number of personal challenges that we've encountered, however, none of that, none of that pain or suffering or misfortune, you know, quantifies or justifies a lap and, a lapse in safety, you know, for others. So it's just poor management and planning on my part, to be honest with you, sir.
Thank you for your honesty, sir.
I, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand. If the fencing is up by the fifteenth and it meets the pool enclosure inspection, that would make him in compliance, correct?
Correct. And I don't know if it's in the fence permit, may need to amend it for an inspection for a pool enclosure. Because it's got to be the self-la, self-closing, self-latching latch.
Oh, okay, so, thank you for that question. Because this was just a regular fence permit. So there's a different level that we have to do for, I thought those latches had to be on the pool enclosure. Like the screened-in room around the pool, not for the actual fence like at the front of the house.
If you're going to use that as the safety enclosure, then it has to meet the requirements. If it's not, and you're going to screen it in, then that requirement for the fence doesn't apply. There has to be a safety enclosure.
So my.
But for compliance, you would need to have the screening complete if the fence is not going to meet the pool enclosure standard. Does that make sense?
Kind of. I mean, here's, here's, here's where my, Ms. Penkey. We, the, the intention of the fence is that it's, we can lock it from the inside so that it gives us a complete perimeter security and, and lack of access, you know, to the yard. In, in that fenced-in area is the screened-in room that has the pool, which has almost no screens right now. They were all blown out during a storm. So, and we won't have the money to do the screen, the screens or the, the make sure, I guess, that the door is compliant for the screen door into the pool with the right latches. I don't see me being able to do that by June eleventh or June fifteenth. I will have the fence done that secures the yard. And I will have the orange safety fence that's forty-eight inches high around the pool enclosure as well. But I don't see me being able to have the money to do the screened-in room in two weeks.
But can I jump in for a second? With the, with the screen, or I'm sorry, with the fence that's going to be completed in the first week of June? That would be in compliance as long as tho, those gates on that fence had self-closing mechanism and lock that I.
Could have to.
To meet the pool enclosure standards.
Meet the requirements of the pool enclosure requirements as I previously read.
So, in terms of the pool enclosure requirements, it sound, which, it's kind, it's strange that just a screen is safer than a wooden fence. But then to be in compliance by the eleventh or the fifteenth of June, it sounds like what you need us to do is to simply have the, at least the panels up forty-eight inches high, have screens in them, and one of those self-closing doors on the screened-in room. Doesn't even matter about the fence at this point.
With the fence, couldn't, could we not, if, if, right now, put the screened-in room aside? With the fence itself, if he had self-latching gates and self-closing, so that the gates could not remain open? If that mechanism was applied to there, would that put him in compliance until such a time that he gets the screen room taken care of?
If the fence met the requirement, or there is a, let's see here. I don't know if there is a way of putting in a secondary fence behind with a gate that meets that requirement, then that may meet that safety requirement for enclosure. But the reason for the screen enclosure, the entire enclosure is screened in because now you have supports that are climbable. So just screening in the bottom forty-eight inches wouldn't comply because the screen enclosure is entirely screened in. So it's, it's a contained unit.
But the compliance on the fence is, we're, we're talking about hardware, not the fence itself. The, the fence would make a barrier, but what needs, the, the code is asking for self-latching.
Is that for all fences, for yards that have?
If you don't have a, a pool enclosure with a self-latch. And we're trying to get you between that gap between June and July.
Okay.
I mean, it's ultimately going to be your decision on means and methods to come into compliance. We're providing more information.
Sure, sure.
As options.
All right.
But the idea again is the door, any access point to the yard that contains a pool needs to have self-closing, self-latching.
Okay.
And I understand that the orange barrier does not come into compliance at all?
No.
Or does it?
No, it, it does not. I mean, it, it could be something that the board may consider for more additional time for compliance because now you have some form of barrier rather than nothing.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are there occupants present at all times, twenty-four hours?
Not, not twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, no.
So there are periods of time when the home is non-surve, you don't have surveillance on it, so you, you don't have eyes on the pool at all times?
Correct.
Okay. And you, you mentioned that June eleventh is pushing it, but this is a, it is a safety concern. Is June eleventh doable if you got to it to put the fence up with the correct hardware?
I mean, worst-case scenario, I could probably just, instead of having multiple gates, just have one, make them non-opening and just have one gate that has a self-closing hinge or whatever and, and all of that. I mean, I could, I'm sure I could make that happen as we build that front section right there, that we would just put. Do all the gates have to be that way? Or I guess they would, wouldn't they?
Yes, any gate that's acts as any egress point to.
Well, I guess, I, I, so, and if we just go ahead and suck it up and get the, the, find the money to do the screened-in room, then all's, I'd have to screen in the, I'd have to have the entire thing screened in, not just up four feet or eight feet or twelve feet. I have to do this, the roof as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm not sure what the best option will be, but obviously I know the clock is ticking and I got about two weeks to figure it out, so.
And, you know, so you understand the reason. If you look historically at all these kids that have gotten lost, a lot of them end up in a body of water. And that is what the concern is.
Yeah, absolutely. I, 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 I don't have an issue with that. That's, that's not all. It's just a matter of, of trying to make the math work of time and money and, and expeditiousness in terms of, of making this happen, so.
I'll entertain a motion if there's no more questions.
Yeah, I'll, I move to find that based on the photographs, testimony of the respondent and the inspector show that there are, that, that, that there are safety issues with regard to the pool enclosure on, on this residence. And that respondent is in violation of section IP, of IPMC section three zero three point two enclosures. I move to find, I move to order that respondent be given until June eleventh to correct the violation. And in the event respondent fails to comply by the state, a fine in the amount of one hundred dollars per day shall be, shall be imposed until compliance is reported to and verified by the city code enforcement inspector.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Christian?
Board member Capra.
Aye.
Board member Owens.
Aye.
Board member Penkey.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
Chair Gilday.
Aye.
All right, item five oh four.
For the record, Chris Albon, Code Compliance Inspector with the City of Winter Springs, I have been sworn. I request this presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. The next agenda item to be heard, case number two zero two five CE zero 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 two nine nine for the property located at seven hundred Cotton Tail Court for violation of IPMC section three oh two point seven accessory structures. Under IPMC section three oh two point seven accessory structures, accessory structures including detached garages, fences and walls shall be maintained structurally sound and in good repair. Case summary, on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, I arrived at the complainant's property to conduct inspection of the reference property based on citizen's complaint. I observed an accessory structure, the screen enclosure which failed to be maintained structurally sound and in a state of good repair. Exhibits one through three, this is exhibit one of seven hundred Cotton Tail Court. Exhibit two of the screen enclosure and exhibit three. On February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, a notice of code violation was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, notice of code violation was delivered to the property owners. On March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property, but was unable to determine if the violation had been corrected. On March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, a notice of hearing was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On April fourth, twenty twenty-five, notice of hearing was delivered to the property owners. On May sixth, twenty twenty-five, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and was advised that, by the complainant, that the violation had not been corrected. I myself was not able to observe it, but the complainant was able to. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the code enforcement board find the property in violation. Issue an order requiring the violation be corrected and the property brought into compliance on or before June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, fifteen days. And consider the imposition of a daily fine of up to two hundred and fifty dollars per day in the event the requirements of the order have not been met by the date set for compliance by the code enforcement board. That concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Inspector, the violation is being found on the screen enclosure, not the fence, just for clarification.
Correct. It's the screen enclosure, so in this case, the property owner has some options. So if they're wanting to enclose the pool, let's say with this fence option, and if they want to demolish the screen enclosure, they can do that as long as, our, the concern is the pool, safety enclosure, the pool's enclosed. But if they remove the accessory structure, the screen closure, they can do that. Or they can repair it and you correct both violations. So that's why they're split up.
Did you have a question?
No, this is apparently the same, it, 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 it sounds very, very similar to what we just dealt with, with the, with the enclosure issue.
I, it's a new, it's, it's a separate case, so some of this will be redundant. I apologize. But just for the record, let me ask you this question. Is your intention to repair the screen you had mentioned, or let me ask you again, is July enough time? July?
June eleventh.
It, we, June eleventh, rather, is probably not enough time. Is it your intention to correct this issue? And if so, when, are you looking at completion, just to give us an idea?
And if we could have your name and address for the record one more time?
Jeffrey Williams, seven hundred Cotton Tail Court, Winter Springs, Florida, three two seven oh eight. It is my intention to keep the screened-in room.
Okay.
I, I might have to, in thinking through this, instead of dedicating, if we are going to be held to, to the June eleventh date, instead of finishing the. instead of finishing the, uh, the wooden stockade fence around the perimeter, I, I might just have to turn around and, and focus on the screened-in room then and getting it rescreened, um, and that, uh, that type of latch on the, the screen doorway into the pool area. Um, and then that would bring it into compliance for safety, correct?
If the, the screen enclosure was repaired and...
Right.
Yeah, as long as everything that's on it is operable as far as...
So then the fence doesn't matter at that point.
Correct. Or if you, you have the option of, if you bring the fence into compliance for a pool enclosure, um, then you, the, you could possibly get more time from the code enforcement board for the accessory structure.
Gotcha.
Let, let me chime in here. You, we already have a, um, a, a finding on file or, or on record here that you're gonna do the wooden fence within that time period. So why don't we stick to this and address it and come up with, if you were, if you're gonna come in compliance on the last case that we heard, and we focus on just the screened-in room now? You had originally made a comment about July, I believe. Um, if you did the wooden fence, is July 15th? Let's say August 1st. Do you believe that would be...
Entire project. Uh, it's our intention, uh, to have the entire project done by August 1st, both the fence and the screened-in room and, and all of that.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Uh, I would state that the last case, just for clarification, we did not dictate means and methods of compliance. We just dictated that they have to have a secure enclosure. We're just stating now that they, at this one, we're focusing on this accessory structure, which is a screen enclosure. We're not talk, talking about a fence at all. Screen enclosure, we're, uh, now discussing extending the timeline out to August 1st.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and obviously until we have a motion, that's not set. Um, but that's just a target.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say that, uh, in, in the last, uh, that in the last case that we heard, uh, I don't think we, we, we didn't focus in on fence or anything else. We just said that, 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 uh, pool had to be enclosed properly. Uh, and that was totally up to the respondent to how he was gonna do that. Whether he was gonna do it by putting a fence up or whether he was gonna do it by completing the screen enclosure, that's his choice, yeah.
But in speaking to that, um, it, it's my understanding your intention is if going forward, you can do that fence and make that happen in the 15 days, then if we gave you to August 1st, this would fit into it and your, all your projects would be completed, but...
My, uh, my issue with, um, thinking through things, I've got multiple gates tha- that are on the front of the property, uh, big enough to put, uh, a car through, that it's not practical to have self-closing hinges on those that would probably be hundreds of dollars, uh, for something to pull that big of a door shut. So I've got to, uh, Heather and I are just gonna have to come up with a way to, uh, to focus on getting the, the least expensive solution, uh, is probably going to be to, to, to rescreen the screened-in room, and make sure that the, the, the doorway into the screened-in room has the proper latches and, uh, and self-closure element to it.
Okay.
So...
And by, and by doing that, he, 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 he manages to solve, he, he manages to solve two compliance issues with one false rule. Because he's got the enclosure taken care of and he's got the screen, the accessory structure taken care of as well.
Correct.
I, I had one question to ask you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you said that the, uh, that the screens had been blown out during a storm?
The, uh, just high winds, they had, uh, developed mildew and brittle because they hadn't been replaced in such a long time.
Oh, I, 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 I understand that.
Oh. I didn't know.
Are they covered by insurance?
Uh, our insurance company left the state. So, no, we didn't get any settlement at all on that.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Well, it sounds to me that we're still questioning on time. Because if he's gonna only focus on the screen enclosure, we're back to the 11th because that's what we gave him for the enclosure.
Mm-hmm.
However, this is only about the accessory structure. So we can give him...
More time on this.
More time on this specific one. How he chooses to comply with them is up to him. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
This is specifically about the enclosure. We can give him more time if he decides to do it to meet both criteria earlier than that, than he can do.
Correct.
And the screen has to also include the roof of the screen enclosure.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Well? I move to find that the photographs and testimony offered by both the officer and the respondent show that there is indeed factual findings that the respondent is in violation of IPMC 302.7 accessory structures. Um, I further move that the respondent be given until August 1st to correct the violation. In the event the respondent fails to comply by this date, a fine in the amount of $100 shall be imposed per day for the violation until compliance is reported to and verified by the city code enforcement.
I'll second that.
Any just further discussion? Christian?
Board member Capro.
Aye.
Board member Owens.
Aye.
Board member Panky.
Aye.
Vice chair Martin.
Aye.
Chair Gilde.
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. And that brings us to item 505.
Thank you guys very much. This is the first time I've been in a situation like this. Thank you very much for listening, guys.
Thank you as well.
Thank you. Right, and we hope it's the last time you're in a situation like this.
Excuse me. For the record, Chris Albon, code compliance inspector at the city of Winter Springs. I have been sworn. I request his presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. Next agenda item to be heard, case number 2025 CE 000551 for the property located at 621 Sailfish Road for violation of Winter Springs City Ordinance Section 5-4A. Permit required for tree removal and land clearing. Under Winter Springs City Ordinance Section 5-4A, permit required for tree remo- tree removal and land clearing, except as provided in section 5-4.5. Herein, no person shall engage in tree removal or engage in land clearing located within the city without first obtaining a permit as provided in this chapter. If a property owner has retained a contractor to perform the land clearing or tree removal, excuse me, the contractor must have a valid city-issued arbor license required by subsection 5-4E and shall obtain the permit required by this chapter prior to the land clearing or tree removal. If no permit is obtained prior to the tree removal or land clearing, the property owner and contractor, if retained, shall ha- shall have violated this section. It shall be a separate violation of this chapter for each tree removed and each day a person is engaged in land clearing without a permit. Case summary, on March 27th, 2025, I arrived at the reference property based on a citizen's complaint of trees being removed without a permit. I observed a tree that had been cut down during the active tree removal without being, tree trimming and removal being performed by a tree trimming crew. While on, while at the reference property, I conducted a permit check, which revealed no arbor permit for tree removal and no contractor's license to perform the tree trimming or removal within the city of Winter Springs. Exhibits one through three. So this is exhibit one of the property at 621 Sailfish Road. Um, how the complaint came in was a, a resident, uh, down the street. They had their power knocked out. Because apparently the tree, when it was cut, fell over on the power line. Uh, Central County Fire had to go out to control that and then Energy had to go out to restore power. This is exhibit two. And exhibit three of the tree that was cut down. Uh, had contacted the arborist. Um, however, we didn't have any permit as far as the health of the tree. The, the contractors that were out there didn't have any documentation, uh, showing as to the health or removal of the tree. On April 2nd, 2025, I arrived at the reference property to conduct a reinspection for an unrelated violation and observed that additional tree trimming had been performed on the same tree as previously noted. While at the reference property, I conducted a permit check, which revealed no arbor permit for the tree removal. Exhibits four through six. So this is exhibit four, that the tree had been removed and cut down completely to the ground, ground at this point. Uh, previously, when I was out there and met with the removal company, they advised that they were, they worked for. This property is owned by a management company. They advised that they worked for the management company or, and for whatever reason, cut down this tree. Um, and they were issued citations for removing trees without a permit and advised to cease any further tree removal based on this reinspection. That did not appear to be the case, that they finished up with the tree removal. This is exhibit five of the reinspection and exhibit six of the tree. On April 2nd, 2025, a notice of code violation and notice of hearing was sent to the property owner, the property owners and registered agents by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On April 7th, 2025, the notice of code violation and notice of hearing was delivered to the property owners and registered agents. Staff recommendation, because this is a case for a irreparable, irreversible violation, staff recommends the code enforcement board find the property to be in violation for a violation that was irreparable or irreversible in nature and issue an order imposing a one-time fine, not to exceed $5,000 for the irreparable or irreversible violation. That concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
What kind of tree was it?
That I do not know.
Well, it was not a palm. Would you say that?
No, it was not a palm.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
And you don't know if it was diseased or not?
We do not know. The arborist wasn't able to determine that either.
It was done without a permit, it was done with...
When you say the arborist, when you say the arborist, is that the city arborist or the, the arborist that was the...
The, the city arborist.
Okay.
Is this a rental property or is it managed by a company or owned by a company?
It's owned by a management company.
Trinity Management.
So they rent it out, okay.
So it, it appears to be rental of some sort.
Okay.
Yeah, no home status claimed.
So that Trinity Management Group appears to be...
And in your observation, you're considering this one tree, even though it appears to have been two trunks? Is that correct?
Yes, uh, just, it appears...
It's one base.
Yeah, it's one base, so it could be a multi-trunk, but still one tree with one base.
And, uh, there, it, it's confirmed that the company that did the removal itself was non-licensed by the city? Were they licensed by any other agency that you were aware of?
They did not have a permit, uh, or a license with the city of Winter Springs to be doing any tree trimming or removal, and they did not have a permit. So the extent of the permit check, um, they did violate the ordinance as far as removing tree trimming or removing trees without that license and permit. So the individuals that were out there were issued citations for doing such, and then we're having this case because more was done to that tree.
Yeah, and for clarification, those other citations are out of the purview of this board. It's just the property owner at this point.
Correct.
Okay. I have no other questions.
I have no questions. There's no, there's, there's no respondent.
No respondent? No, no contact?
And they continue to violate after the fact?
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I, I move to find that, uh, based on the photographs and the testimony from the, uh, code inspector, show that there, uh, that, that there is certainly a factual finding that a tree was removed without a permit and that respondent is in violation of, uh, section, um, of, uh, of, uh, section 5, Tac 4 Alpha of the, uh, Winter Springs Code. I move to order, uh, and accordingly, uh, because this is a, uh, because this is a, uh, a, 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 a permanent...
Irreversible.
It's a permanent, uh...
Irreversible.
It's irreversible, it's a, it's an irreversible, uh, matter that respondent be fined $5,000, uh, for violation of this section.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Christian?
Board member Capro.
Aye.
Board member Owens.
Aye.
Board member Panky.
Aye.
Vice chair Martin.
Aye.
Chair Gilde.
Aye.
Before we wrap up, are, is there any input? Additional input, questions, concerns we need to address? No?